It's now six o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Morelio, will you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dr. Head, will you certify that the meeting notice was posted appropriately?
Yes, I certify it was posted in accordance with the law.
Thank you. Any introductions?
So, I have two special recognitions and so we have two people that have received awards that I think you ought to be aware about have been recognized. One is Mario Castillo, which we started, the board was notified this, but we skipped over it at the last meeting, just so you'll know. We had a little picture of you when you were a lot younger. So Mario
Younger?
Let me rephrase that. When you looked a little younger, anyway. So Mario was recognized as, help me Mario, you were recognized as one of the top forty people under the age of forty in the Houston region? Is that correct? So that's quite an honor, so congratulations. I'm proud of Mario, I'm not surprised. The other one I'm proud of also, the other one was recognized as one of the top fifty influential women in the Houston region, one of the top fifty influential women in the Houston region, and that was Linda Head, so. I didn't miss anybody because they're the only two I have, so if I missed anybody else out there, you just need to let me know, so. Okay, on our
So Dr. Head, I'd like to report, this Sunday I did a biathlon relay with my nephew and we got third place.
Nephew that went to Lone Star?
Pardon me?
This is the nephew that went to Lone Star?
Yes, and we did it on the SciFair campus, too, by the way.
Okay, good. I have one also.
First liar doesn't have a chance.
Couple of weeks ago, somebody told me that we had a board member that competed in the Houston Marathon from start to finish. Who was that individual? Dr. Kyle Scott, give him a hand.
I did not finish third.
But you finished, you finished, right? Okay.
Yeah. Secondly, I have been informed that our outstanding chancellor has been appointed to the advisory board of the ACCT, and it's the presidential advisory board, so that's a pretty big, big job. So we'd like to commend you on such an outstanding appointment, Dr. Head.
So really I'm the advisory board for the trustees, just, they don't, he didn't mention that, this is really to kind of help with the trustees, so whatever help you might need.
Well, I started to mention, I didn't know how well that would go over. But congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for that, and then workshop?
Yes, sir, workshop.
Okay, so we have two parts on the workshop, and let me do the, Letty, before you and Claudia, or Mario, before I do that, let me do a quick overview of where we are with some of our hiring, just very quickly over that.
The recruiting?
So we just, we have the latest updates on our payroll and kind of where we are, and so we've done a couple of things. Mark Chavez has led a group, we have a group of Hispanic employees working on a number of different projects, but one is to increase the number of hires that we have, so this is an overview. And Mark is, I think, on vacation, and we didn't want him to come in on his vacation, so. Oh, he's working on dissertation, okay. So Mark's done a really good job. He put together a group, what I asked him to do was to go out and actually recruit. I mean physically, go take a look and be available and talk to people about coming to work at Lone Star. So this is the pamphlets and the brochures that they put together. And I've been meeting, they meet monthly, I think, I've attended most of the meetings, and we just talk about issues and how we can help and kind of where they are. So this is where they went, so we talked about where to go. We were going to predominantly Hispanic, where we thought we could attract Hispanic, potential Hispanic faculty members and administrators and staff. So this is where they've been, they have physically gone there. And there's a group of them that have gone, and we set up a special budget out of Helen's office, I believe, for kind of the marketing recruiting piece of this. I'm very pleased with what they're doing. I mean, they decided the schools, and we went to the highest, the schools that had the highest Hispanic enrollment. This gives you, this is some of the things that they've been doing. Down at the bottom, so there's conferences that we have where we actually go, I want, what I wanted was them to go there and have people actually come talk with them personally about what is, what it's like to live here, what it's like to work here. Because we know internally, but when we're trying to attract people, if you come from a small town, say down in the valley, Houston can be pretty intimidating, so, you know, what we talked to them about was, or one of the things we talked to them about is that the Houston metropolitan area, especially in the Lone Star service area, is made up of all these different communities. And whatever lifestyle you want to live here, you can live that, whether you want urban, suburban, or if you want to rural, whatever it is, you can have here. On the marketing, we've been trying to develop marketing materials, and Amos's office has been working with them a lot about, we want to show them what it actually looks here, and I'm not talking about something that some, it's not canned, it's what it actually looks here. And of course, if you have not done this, you can go take a look at, on the web, and look at YouTube, for example, and see all the stuff that the students have done. I mean, it's really kind of interesting. If you want a good overview of the college, just go to YouTube, punch in Lone Star College, and you'll see. I'm really pleased, I think it's, so this is what they've done, this is who they've been talking with. This is a process, it's just going to take us a while to go through the, to get our numbers up, but I'll show you some numbers in just a minute. And so let me show you, with the, any of the other one, we've got one more than. That didn't come out right, I knew these were two separate PowerPoint, sorry. So under administrators, minus the I in there, but you can take a look, I just want you to see kind of across the board. This just came out, we just got this report today, so you can see how many employees we have at any, you know, when you take a snapshot, you can see how large we are, number one, and you can see, if you take a look, really at black, Hispanic, Asian, that's thirty-two, thirty-three, almost forty percent of our employees, I mean, we're sixty percent, or fifty-three percent Anglo, and then other. We're making progress. It is, it takes us a while, but we're making progress to diversify. We've got this for the board, we've got this broken down by individual college, however you want to see it, so, so that's that. Any questions about that piece of it? And we'll, we'll send this to the board if you'd like.
Yes.
Okay, so, okay. Okay, Mario, do you want to introduce Claudia and Letty?
Hello, I guess I will introduce Claudia and Letty. So this is Letty Charbonneau to my right, and Claudia Madrigal to my left, and I guess they can take it over from there.
Good evening, Board, Chair, and Chancellor Head. My name is Claudia Madrigal, and I am the Executive Director of Governance and Compliance. With me is Letty Charbonneau, the Executive Director of Internal Audit. We are here tonight to give you an introduction to the Office of Governance, Audit, and Compliance, which is a new office that's been developed here at Lone Star. Now, we know you all have a busy agenda, so we will make this brief. To begin, I would tell you that this office began operations in November of 2016. It was created by our Vice Chancellor and General Counsel Mario Castillo in collaboration with Chancellor Head. And as you will see on our next slide, we want to give you a quick overview. The purpose of this office is ensuring a culture of accountability and a positive environment for all members of the college community. I want to tell you quickly about some of our key features. This office is confidential and objective, so what does that mean? We aren't affiliated with any other office or department here at Lone Star, we are independent. We're housed here in the Leadership Building in an access-restricted suite. We don't share our information or files with any other office or department unless provided for by law and policy. We are also specialized, we are led by the Executive Directors, Advisors, and Auditors who all have education and professional experience in the sensitive areas involved with this office. Now, I'm going to turn this over to Letty, she's going to talk to you very quickly about the structure of this office and then also internal audit.
Claudia, before you leave, can you tell them a little, your educational background?
Absolutely, absolutely. So I am a licensed attorney here in Texas. I went to law school at the University of Houston Law Center. Before I came here, I was at the University of Texas Health Science Center doing very similar compliance work to what I'll be doing now. And before that, I was practicing labor and employment litigation on the defense side here in Houston.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, so the Office of Governance, Compliance, Governance, Audit, and Compliance reports from Mario Castillo, Vice Chancellor and General Counsel. Internal Audit also reports functionally to the Chancellor. Regarding Internal Audit, we have an average of seventeen years of audit experience, and we have multiple professional certifications, such as a Certified Public Accountant and Certified Internal Auditor. Claudia is currently in the process of recruiting the Governance and Compliance Advisors, and she already kind of covered her background. The only thing I wanted to add was that she also has more than one professional certification in human resources and has specialized training and experience in investigations and in conflict resolution. On our next slide, we're going to focus on Internal Audit, and then after that Claudia will tell you a little bit more about Governance and Compliance to conclude our presentation. The goal of Internal Audit is to provide independent, objective assurance and advisory services that are designed to add value and improve operations. Our work is conducted in accordance with auditing standards, and the work is driven by a board-approved annual audit plan that is developed based on a risk assessment. We perform a variety of audits to provide assurance on governance, risk management, and internal control processes such as operational, financial compliance, and information technology audits. The recommendations that come out of these audits are also monitored to ensure implementation of management's corrective action plans. Now, I'll turn it over back to Claudia to talk about Governance and Compliance.
So with regard to the Governance and Compliance side, again, we're independent, we're objective, and we're neutral. We're completely driven by the board policies and Chancellor's procedures and everything that we do. We will provide oversight for compliance and ethics activities in the college community. We also are available to conduct neutral investigations of highly sensitive matters and concerns that come up. We're responsible for administering our ethics point, which is the report line here at Lone Star, and also to provide oversight of the mandatory training that comes through on an annual and biannual basis. With all that being said, what we want to close and emphasize on is the fact that the creation of this office is another very exciting and purposeful step in the direction of achieving Lone Star's vision and mission, and we are very happy to be a part of it, and we thank you for your time tonight.
I really, I really appreciate you and your group and what you do for us. Keep up the good work and maintain the momentum.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
To the board, I'm, they are about as independent as an office can get, most of the time. Mario, I'm not even sure I know what they're doing, which is, the way it's set up, that's the way it's supposed to be. You don't know? Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So I'm very pleased with just the office itself, and you all know Letty's been here for a while, and so you get the reports that Letty sends in. So both of them do, I'm glad to have you, and I think it's an important part of what we do here, so. Okay, any questions?
Very good report.
Thank you. Jennifer, I see Tim back there. Before he leaves, because we will go into closed session for about an hour, but before, unless you want to hang around for another hour, but I want to introduce Tim Peterson, who works for JP Morgan. And we just recently sold $150 million in bond, and Tim works here in the Woodlands, but he was with us in New York, and I'm trying Do you want to do that presentation like right now or not?
Do I do it now?
Yeah, let's just do it now while he's here, so, do you feel like, sorry, I put you on the spot, and, okay. Well, while Tim's here, I saw Tim standing back there in the dark, so I thought, I wanted you to know, so several weeks ago, we, CFO Clarence Greer, and our Chair Elton Smith, and our Vice Chair Kyle Scott went to New York, and we sold bonds, we were actually there. So you want to talk about the interaction with our advisor and JP Morgan and us and how this works? And then, we were going to do this a little later, but since Tim is here, I thought we'll just show it to you now, so.
Yeah, so I have here for the limited tax general obligation bond series 2017A that we just priced on January eighteenth, and we're going to close on February sixteenth. So here's a quick summary of the transaction, I just mentioned when we priced and closed, and the purpose was for the 2014, the voters approved $485 million of debt for construction and equipment projects. $150 million of the first issuance was issued in April of 2015 for Phase One. And what we just completed was the second issuance of another $150 million, this is to complete some of the Phase One projects and to begin Phase Two projects. For the bonds, what we are promising to use to repay investors is a direct obligation of the system. It's payable directly from property taxes that we levy. Our ratings, I believe everyone received the report from S&amp;P that we did get AAA, and it's a stable outlook. On the bonds themselves, the system will make interest payments on February fifteenth and August fifteenth of each year. Here's where I just shared the external team, and this is how, where JP Morgan comes in. First, for our financial advisor representing the system and helping us is RBC Capital Markets. Our primary contact there is Clarence Greer, and he was in New York as well, as well as Stephanie Henning from RBC. Our co-bond and disclosure counsel is Bracewell, and then Eduardo Cologne. Then we have the syndicate members of banks, underwriters, who actually go and market the bonds to investors to sell them. The senior manager was JP Morgan, and that's Tim Peterson as our representative, who was with us in New York, helping to sell those bonds. Additionally, we had Estrada Hinojosa, Coastal Securities, George K. Baum, Mezero Financial, and Stiefel Nicholas, helping to market our bonds to investors. So a quick summary of the performance that we saw from our underwriters. You can see here the orders that were placed, so we had $133 million worth of bonds to sell. We received $278 million worth of orders for those bonds, and you can see them broken down by the different syndicate members. So in terms of performance, for the senior manager, there's a lot of different variables that you need to look to to evaluate a senior manager, but for me, one key ratio that I like to look at is how many times sold we are. So we had $133 million worth of bonds to sell, and we still had orders for $278 million worth. So that's where we get the 2.09 times sold. That is a very good ratio. You want to be at least one times, because you have to sell all the bonds. But you don't want that ratio to be too high, because then that points to not a correct price for the bonds, for what you've sold them for.
Can you explain the discrepancy between the 133 and the 150 number?
Yes, so the 150 is the actual face value of the bond, so when you sell a bond, it's a hundred, a hundred-dollar face value bond with a five percent coupon. But if the interest rate that the system gets is something lower, say three percent, that means you actually have to sell those bonds to investors for something above 100 million, so we get what we call a premium. So the actual amount of bonds that we sold is 133 million, but the actual amount of proceeds that we receive from the sale is the 150 million. That's the difference between the two numbers. So like I said, in terms of performance, having a two-times ratio is very good. It means we sold all the bonds, and we sold them with confidence that we sold them at the right price. In terms of the other syndicate members, a key thing to look at is first whether they place priority orders. That's a very difficult thing to do for the syndicate members who are not the senior manager. So in that sense, Coastal Securities, George K. Baum, and Estrada Hinojosa did a great job placing those orders. Following that, then you just want to look at the percentage of orders placed on the far right compared to what their liability is. So in summary, this was a very successful transaction for the system. So just some of the final numbers for where we ended, like I said, the actual proceeds that we received for project funds is the 150 million. The cost of issuance to conduct this transaction was just shy of $500,000. The underwriters discount that goes to all of the syndicate members combined is $726,000. This is the one key number I like to say, is we got 3.66 percent on our bonds. And you can see here that they're going to be outstanding for an average life of eighteen years, and the average annual debt service will be 8.3 million. So to give a picture of where we ended up, here is the total debt service schedule for the system after sale of these bonds. The dark blue is what it was prior to the sale of these bonds, and the light blue is the addition of the series. You do see, obviously you can see that there is a ramp up in debt service, but that has been incorporated all along in the plans with RBC and management of the system's debt service fund balance. And that concludes.
You want to make a comment about the impact on our debt, I mean, I'm talking about our debt rate, the tax rate?
Right, so the tax rate, we are expecting to remain around the 0.027.
Seven, eight, yeah.
And that's why I mentioned, despite having this ramp up in debt service, we manage that through the use of the debt service fund balance. That way, everything is still smoothed out in terms of the impact on the tax rate.
So for the rest of you, so Tim Peterson was there with us and, and his staff, and they, just, thank you, Tim. And Clarence was there, if Clarence were here, I would, it just is, it's one of the most fascinating experiences you've ever seen from our end of it. Now, we've seen it here locally, but being in New York of it, now, we've seen it here locally, but being in New York and watching that, and watching the volume of business come through, like I said, Tim lives here in the Woodlands, which I did not know until we were up there, I'd seen him before, I just didn't know he lived, I never thought about it, and he was in New York overseeing the transaction with JP Morgan, and they were just, I thought, exceptionally professional and very helpful, and gave us advice, and steered this through, so, and Jennifer had done this many times before with the city of Houston, so she knew what she was doing, and Clarence Greer, you all know, who's been, he's, I just, I cannot say enough good things about Clarence, so...
Yeah, the one thing I want to say is, I've heard about bond ratings, you know, before, and I finally now understand the importance of having a AAA bond rating, you know, when I saw those orders coming in, I said, you know, this is the icing on the cake, so to speak, you know, we have to maintain our AAA bond rating, and when we do that, we can borrow money, you know, at a lower rate, and people really want to invest in our bonds, and I appreciate having the opportunity, go to New York, and to see our new CFO in action, I was there, very impressed at the value that she brought, and the respect that she had from JP Morgan, et cetera, and I'm glad to have you, and thank you again for the wonderful opportunity.
Steve, do I remember correctly that there are 50 community colleges in Texas, and only a handful have AAA bond rating, is that right?
Yes, I believe there's five, right?
I think it was five.
I think there's five.
Well, that means that Mario got a reward for being under 40, you two, you're, are you over 40?
I'm over 40, yes.
You two, you two, you know, an award for being over 40.
The difference between, Tim, correct me if I'm wrong, because this came from your guys, I asked them the difference, we were back there, I think you were there, the difference between a AAA and a AA+ was about 8.5 million over the term of the bond, that's, I think that's what your guys said, that was just a ballpark figure, I, and the reason I was asking is how critical that AAA rating is to us, and it's just, it's very important that we maintain that AAA rating, so.
Yeah, just to reinforce that point, so, Tim was essentially, right, the JP Morgan brings us up there, and he's working on spec until the deal closes, so we have 75 minutes to sell $150 million worth of stuff, that just gives you a great idea of the incredible amount of money that's up there circulating in the financial markets, right? So then the idea is that they're putting this out and said, now, did we do a good job, would you like to sell to the people that we brought to you? So we have a traditional portfolio of investors, and part of their job, part of their ambition was to increase that portfolio, so that we have diversified interest invested in our portfolio, buying our bonds, so then when we go back to the market, we have more people willing to do so again. They completely knocked it out of the park. One of the things that Clarence did was come in, was strategy, where do we set these rates at different times, do we take this, do we take that? They killed it, because at the same time we were doing this, another municipality was coming into the bond market and was undersubscribed, if I remember that correctly at the time. So what they're saying is that, that Tim earned his money, but what I will say is that, at the same time, when we're all walking around a little fumbled and confused, Jennifer walks in, and everyone gets buttoned up, and it's all business, and she makes sure that everything goes according to plan, and everything went exactly as it needed to, so bravo all around everybody.
I have a question. I heard her say, fund balance and tax rate were how we were going to manage this, we spent a lot of time last year talking about fund balance, so tell me how that works into that other issue.
Well, my specific question, what I wanted her to talk about was just the tax rate, the 2.78 that we have, is part of, you know, our overall tax rate's 0.1078, and a 2.78 of that is debt payment, I want to make sure that she answered or addressed the, with this bond issuance, our tax rate remains the same, our tax, our debt payment, debt payment remains the same. We actually don't have to pay the 2.78, we could go a little lower than that and pay it, but we're paying off our debt early, so, go ahead.
And the fund balance that I'm mentioning is not the same as what you're referencing, those are within the restricted funds solely for the use of debt service that comes from that tax rate. As we bring in the funds each year, solely for the purpose of debt service, they go into that fund only for that purpose of servicing the system's debt.
Is that fund balance part of the overall fund balance, that S&amp;P wants us to get to 20%?
No.
It's separate?
Separate, restricted use.
Okay.
We're going to come back to you, well, actually, when we have the retreat, we're going to talk a little bit about this, but her latest projection was, and remember, she just started here on January the 5th, is that we would be at 16.1 by the end of this fiscal year, right?
We're still working through those, to make sure they're-
And our goal is to get up to 20% by the year 2020, or 2020, 2021, we would be up to 20%, which is the recommendation of Standard and Poor's, so.
What is our debt service fund balance as a percentage of annual debt service requirements?
I don't have that off the top of my head, but I can absolutely get that for you, yes.
That ratio. Can you tell me approximately?
I don't know.
Rather than try to remember numbers off the top of my head and perhaps mention them incorrectly, I would prefer to make sure I get you the correct information, and I can follow up with that.
Thank you.
So our annual debt service payments, though, are almost 50 million, they're right at about 48 right now, they're almost 50, or they will be 50.
Yeah, they will be around 50.
But you're asking, though, for the fund balance and the debt-
Service account, yes.
We'll get that for you.
Yes, I can get that for you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
The Board of Trustees, in accordance with Section 551.01 of the Texas Government Code, will move into closed session under one or more of the following provisions of the Act. Section 551.071, consultation with attorney. Section 551.072, deliberation regarding real property. Sections 551.074, personnel matters. Section 551.076, deliberation regarding security devices.